Sounds good.
Okay.
I've got 5:30.
5:30, yes. Okay, item number two, appointment of board member to fill vacancy. Oh, look at the wrong one, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Had a moment. Members present, we're both here. Hear from public, do we have anybody who wants to speak from the public?
Right. Catherine, can you hear me? Paul Vargas?
Hearing just fine.
All right, I just, um, I haven't, I've been pretty quiet the last few meetings, there's been a lot going on. I just wanted to say, there's a couple of things on the agenda that I'm interested in. One of them is opening of the town office building and the library. Things are slowly improving. I don't necessarily agree with what everybody's doing, but I'd like to see us at least try to partially open some of these buildings. I think it's important for a lot of people. The library, because not everybody has internet access and not everybody has access to reading material they may need. So, and I think if I read it right in the Citizen, it's gonna open this week if I understood it right, so.
Actually, we'll be talking about that tonight.
Okay, and that's kinda it, and hello, hope everybody's doing well.
Thank you.
Stay me, Paul.
All right, anybody else from the public?
Catherine, this is Sheri, I just wanted to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions that I can answer about anything.
Okay? Yes, thank you very much. Okay, next, briefing. Is Chris on?
I'm in, I'm on.
Chris, you wanna take us through that briefing?
Sure. John Filczak, Executive Director of NICOC, has forwarded information regarding proposed reformation of Connecticut zoning laws through a newly formed organization, Desegregate Connecticut. I joined it, so I'm getting updates on it, and I will pass them on if they mean anything to us. Very good. The, um, grant for Pompey Hollow Park for the sidewalks and the paving and the drainage was filed on time. They're hoping to be able to do the awards by the end of the month, before the end of the month. And hopefully, we'll get it. Um, Treasury reports, the 2019-20 audit is on schedule. And Bluebird anticipates the new bus will be delivered during the first week of October. The other thing was, I sent you copies of the email response that I got from the state police. And they will begin making a presence on North Road, he's hoping tomorrow. And he's hoping to be able to get somebody to sit up there at least for a little while on every shift.
Very good.
And that's it for briefing.
That's been a problem for a while.
I, I know that it's a special, I know it's a special meeting and we can't address it, but I'm assuming, Chris, that the correspondence we're getting from John Filczak has been passed on to the P&amp;Z, or he's also copying in them?
Mike knows about it. Mike and I have already talked about desegregate Connecticut. So I think he's gonna pass the information on to Jeff. Right now, it's just in the talking stage. But, um, some of it concentrates on fair housing, low-income housing. And one of the points that stuck in my mind was the fact that they're trying, or they want to push how planning and zoning and zoning boards of appeal are elected. And their focus is to see them appointed based on qualification, not on popularity election contests.
Well, that's probably be debated.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure, whatever we're hearing about, that the P, we're gonna, eventually, I would be asking, or I hope we would be asking the planning and zoning for their input and comments on it. The only other thing on the Pompey Hollow Park small economic assistance grant, just wanna thank you and Cheryl, everybody who was involved. I know it wasn't the easiest thing in the world, but getting that out in time was important, and thank you folks.
Hopefully, we get it. And I can add the other thing, we're looking at a grant. It's a DOT grant for encouraging things like walking trails, sidewalks, exercise-related things. So Joey is looking at it, and maybe we could do something in Ashford Memorial Park. But we'll have to see, I haven't read it thoroughly, and he is, he's reading it.
And if I understand correctly, um, this time for submission of that particular application is when?
October 16th, I think.
Yep.
It's mid-October. So if we don't get the steep grant, we might be able to just switch the steep grant over to DOT. But hopefully, we can get both.
Very good.
We'll try.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, hear from boards, commissions, committees, do we have anything? I don't. Acceptance of minutes of special meeting of August 25th?
I'll move that.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? None. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, old business, none? Nope. New business, approve appointment of Michael Gardner, Ashford EMD, to act as representative to the upcoming R E P T CEO meeting on Thursday, September 10th. Bill, are you clear on what that's about?
I am.
Want, uh, motion to make that, approve that appointment?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Motion passes, thank you. Approve support of NICOC region as Economic Development District. It's an Economic Development District.
I think I gave you the stuff, um.
You wanna, you wanna recap that for us?
Yeah. Um, what they do is they analyze regional conditions, they identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Define the visions, goals, and objectives of the region. Design strategies to accomplish goals and identify needed projects. Provide a process for regional dialogue and Economic Development Strategy Evolution. It's just, basically, it's giving NICOC permission to become an Economic Development District.
Bill, are you good with that?
I'm good with that, Catherine.
I think it's healthy, so I'll make the motion to approve it. Bill, you want a second?
So that will be, Chris, I'll second that, but for discussion purposes, just to clarify, that will be the Board of Selectmen endorsing, looking into that, is that what it is in general?
No, you're endorsing NICOC to
Right.
become a part of it. And be active in whatever that system comes up with. You know, they have the resources.
Right, but it's, it's but, yeah, I realize that, but the Board of Selectmen is gonna endorse them pursuing that, right?
Right.
I assume we'll be getting reports down the road?
Yeah, Phil Jack is good about sending reports out.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, thank you. Okay, discussed town office building reopening strategy draft policies. Bill, I don't know if you've had a chance to go through these?
Um, I didn't see any regarding town hall, I saw them regarding the library.
Actually, we have, it was an email from Chris, September 2nd.
I gave you, it's the Ashford Return to Work Criteria.
Right.
Gave that to you the other day, and it's the COVID employee draft policies.
For, for town office building?
Yeah, for everything.
Now, those aren't the ones that we received from Zach.
No, that was the library.
Right.
The other day, I gave you this one, this is for, basically, it was town office building. And Public Works.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't remember seeing that case, I may have, I'll go through my stuff.
So show
Catherine, I did, I did have a brief discussion with Mike Gardner.
About this?
Say what?
About this?
No, just in general, about looking forward to trying to reopen our facilities. And he had made a suggestion, what?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
He, he had made a suggestion that he thought it would be a good idea if at some point we put together a committee and just sort of brainstorm this, in, together with what the COVID requirements are from the governor's office. I kinda thought that was a good idea.
Let me, uh, let me clarify what was sent out, and what it is, is COVID employee draft policies. It was put together by the town employees, and, uh, this is a draft. And it was done collectively with, with, again, several town staff, using information from the Connecticut COVID website and information from Rob Miller, Director of Eastern Highlands Health District. So, um, I think it would be a good idea if perhaps we maybe table this until the next meeting, when you've had a chance to review it. But what I would expect is that whatever we're doing would be, uh, in terms of the procedures and everything, would be reviewed by the Department of Public Health within, um, Eastern Highlands, just as we have done for the library. So, that would be, that would be my thinking at this point, because what we really wanna do is make sure we're in full compliance, and those guys are the experts. And, and then, uh, we, uh, in terms of us putting together a committee, I guess I don't understand that, because the reality is, is that our committee, a committee would not drive this. It would be what the safety measures are that have to be in place, and contingency measures have to be if I could finish, before
I'm not looking for a committee to
I'm not, I'm looking, not looking for a committee of laymen. You know, we can take input from everybody, and I think that's appropriate. But the reality is, the experts are the other guys. And we can review it in light of the governor's, um, announcements.
If I could just finish.
Sure. Your screen's frozen, can you hear us? Bill?
Bill, we'll do on reopening offices and everything, but I, I'd like to get staff, once we come up with something, I'd like to get them to give us their recommendations, so we have that to consider, and I'm not sure what happened to my copy of that, but, Chris, if you could put it in my box when I come in and sign POs, I'll certainly get it and review it.
Yep, I will. They did put together something? It's a draft? So, yeah, if you, it, maybe it's in your box.
All right, I'll put a copy in your box in the morning. Bill, are you there still?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, so I, I did review it, and again, my, we'll, we'll end up discussing this, I'm sure, at length, to make sure that we've got something that's good in place. But again, the, I would hope, I would look to making sure that whatever is put in place is fully reviewed by the Department of Public Health, as we did for the library.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, I knew you would, thank you. Okay, we'll move along to the next. Uh, I'm looking at, on our agenda here, does this item include, this says town office building reopening strategy. Chris, does this include the library?
Well, that's item D, that's the next one.
This is town office building and public, it includes Public Works also.
And Public Works, but not, but not library?
Not the library specifically.
Right. Uh, we were waiting for a response from the, uh, from the library, and Carol Anne, thank you for forwarding that. Okay, Bill, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. Although that's not really on the agenda, I just wanted to make sure that you have a chance to look at that. Because we did get information from the Department of Public Health and, and Carol Anne, and I'm assuming, uh, Beth.
I thought it was on the agenda.
Did I miss something?
Well, it's the next one, I thought.
Yeah, it's D.
It is, it's item D on the agenda.
D isn't dog. Okay, all right, so, listen, we'll move on to that then. So with that one
Since Carol Anne, since Carol Anne is here, maybe we can have her just comment.
I just wanted, did you read the, did you read what was given to us?
I saw it.
Okay, good. So Carol Anne?
Hi. We, we have thought long and hard and read the regulations that the Department of State has put out for reopening Connecticut.
Your volume is fading a little bit, so, thank you.
We've also looked at what the American Library Association has stated for safety of materials to go back into the collection when they come back into the library. And we've read the 15-page report that the state put out, and we can, we know that we can successfully open the library and have patrons come in safely. Now, we have our enclosure around the light, around the circulation desk. We have what was where the room where our programs would be upstairs, that's now our quarantine room for the materials to go in. We have signage for the, the right way to go into the library and use it. We have, um, it's set up to be successful, we have our hand sanitizing unit. We, um, have, you know, all of our programs are, of course, have stopped. They'll, they'll continue in-person, no programming, but we're moved to online programming with some different authors coming to do some programs that way. We're limiting the number of patrons to come into the library. You, there will only be four allowed at, at any given time. And also, we've moved our computers from where they were for a couple of different reasons. One, that, that particular unit that they were sitting on was falling apart, and we were gonna get a new one anyway, but now we've put it in a location where it's gonna be safe, not only for patrons to be on those computers at a good six-foot social distance, if we just use the two outer ones, but also, it's, it's great effects for the library. We, in order for people to use the library's computers, they need to call the library and set up an appointment. And so they'll use those two computers at any given time, and then the computers will be washed, you know, wiped down with the correct wipes that are approved on the reopening of Connecticut. And then the next step of patrons can come in and use the computers.
Really, but, Carol Anne, can I interrupt here? Like, I feel that you addressed all the concerns that were in the notice from the
Right.
health people, so I also feel that it can be done safely if the numbers are kept down, and truly, I don't see a huge number going in. And if we set up appointments for those who do wanna use the computers, I, I think it can be very safe.
Right.
If I understand correctly, um, the overall capacity, customer capacity will be four in the library, two of which will be allowed to be on your computers, which now have a six-foot distancing. That was one of the responses that you gave to the Department of Public Health. Going through, and then aisles will be taped and marked with arrows to indicate one-way passage. And, um, do, do you have anything that lays that out at all, how that's gonna work, or?
Well, our, our shelving, our, our rows are handicap compliant, so there's four feet going down them, and then they have a circular motion at the end, so if we had someone with a wheelchair, they could easily spin it. So, on the ends of each of our stacks that hold the shelf, that hold the books, there's a, it literally is a yield sign that says only one person in the aisle. And then, you know, you go that way, you get to the end, you would then dial left and go the next aisle. So
Like a Walmart.
Exactly, exactly, in, in fact, our, even our elevator is marked, it will be marked, I haven't, I didn't put them down yet, because we're still moving things in and out, but it's got a giant circle that says where someone should be standing in the elevator, and only one person, unless there's two people from a family, can use the elevator at any given time.
Very good. So, for the public, I'm just going to, if it's okay, just kinda run through a few of these, Bill, is that okay? From what we got for information?
Sure, I, just, with Beth and Carol Anne, they were breaking up on me, I wasn't getting everything they were saying, I don't know if everybody else is.
Well, one of the things I, I think that they were doing was kind of alluding to some of what the questions were from Eastern Highlands.
From Zach.
And what their responses are. Would that be correct, Carol Anne? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a real quick one through, run-through, if that will help everyone, so everybody can hear it themselves. Aisle will be taped or marked with arrows, sector recruit, uh, rules require following signage, there'll be social distancing protocols, cleaning and disinfection protocols, personal protection protocol, protocols, which include wearing masks and staff wearing gloves when assisting patrons. They have a quarantine room, which houses their returned items for 72 hours, as noted by the American Library Association. And employees maintain a six-foot distance, as noted on page 11 of Reopen Connecticut. Employees should stay home if experiencing symptoms, all employees are aware that if they do not feel well, or they believe that they may have been exposed, they are to call the director and stay home. They'll also be instructed to contact their doctor. Patrons should not enter if they are experiencing symptoms. They've addressed that in their poster about social distancing and on their website and Facebook pages.
Can I interrupt for one second? Sure. If employees are experiencing system, uh, symptoms, you have to notify somebody
Health department.
because it affects everybody in the library.
Right, right.
Right.
We would notify the health department and would, um, what all the other libraries in the state have done, when one of their employees is were closed down until after they had the results. If the results were negative right away, then they would open back up. If the nugget, if the result was positive, then we would close for a minimum of 14 days.
Good, and just bear with me, and you are breaking up a little bit as you're speaking, so I think we got the gist of that. There's a 211 hotline to report any violations. Daily health check of employees, as you were indicating. And so, that health check, just so you know, um, there are other companies that are like, have people, or other places are having people check their temperatures. They may not know that they have some symptoms or whatever, is that part of what you're talking about?
All of the three employees that returned with me, and all of them took their including myself, before they come to the library.
Very good, very good. It says, adequate PPE for all employees, should someone not have any or forget to bring it, I'm assuming, yes. You said you have thousands of gloves and approximately 125 masks available now. Does that include if someone comes to the building and they're not in the building yet, but they wanna come in and they don't have a mask? Do we provide a mask to them, or what's your thinking on that?
I was not going to, I was going to ask them, that if we can assist them from outside, you know, if you came to the door instead, you just wanted to pick up a book, we can bring the book out to you and hand it to you. But I, we, we don't have a huge budget to be giving people masks, you know? And, and really, in this day and age that we're going through, people should have a mask in their car.
Yeah. Okay. Um, let's see.
The important thing is, though, Catherine, I think, is that people realize that in order to enter our building, our library, you know, if they have a medical documentation, so you know, you can't wear a mask because they are sick, then we would, you know, not because of sick, but because of a medical condition, we would still like to bring the items out to them versus them coming to the library.
Very good. Uh, okay, so, uh, moving quickly through these. Ventilation should be adjusted to maximize fresh air intake from outside, any ceiling fans should be adjusted so the paddles draw air upwards instead of down onto individuals, no floor or mounted fans, wall-mounted fans should be used. And it says you've purchased three air purifiers for the library, which are oversized for the square footage, and you have functioning windows, which you open when the air conditioners are not running. You've purchased the air purifier, so are they there now?
Yes, they've been
Wonderful. Uh, cleaning checklist needs to be created with individual responsibilities. Can we get a copy of your cleaning checklist?
Sure.
Okay. And hand sanitizer being readily available, they, you've purchased a touchless unit and have it in place. Where is that going to be located?
If you know where the library threshold is, so the elevator and the main entrance door is on one side, and you would have to go through the threshold into the library, it's right to the right of that one. As you walk through the threshold, there's the unit. As soon as you get into our, into our main library section.
All right, we broke up a little bit there, um, I'm
So, we have the elevator, and we have the main entrance.
Yeah.
If you were to take a right, you would go into the library, the main, like where the stacks are. As soon as you get in, just pick your hand out to the right, that's where the machine is.
Is the elevator being cleaned, will the elevator be cleaned every other day, like the rest of the
The elevator is cleaned every day.
Very good.
Every day.
Very good.
And of course, we're limiting it to one person, two people coming into the library from the same
And then we talked, then it talked about soft toys are being referenced as being pulled. So, you, and you've already been clear, you only have soft toys, and they will no longer be available.
Right, at this point, they're not available.
Yeah. Sad that we have to do all this, but
It's, it's, our friend groups spent a lot of money, you know, making our construction beautiful with these wooden little pockets, and we can't let them go out, but when the world gets better.
Yeah. Uh, it says what type of cleaning and disinfecting products are being used, and you have Clorox, germicidal bleach, and disinfecting wipes, as instructed by the CDC on the website. Cleaning and disinfecting products, uh, wipes, et cetera, are going to be made available near commonly-used surface that's been set up. Yeah, and have signage at computer stations asking patrons to wipe down keyboards, chairs, and desks after each use. Employees must monitor and ensure this is done. You have, there is signage, and patrons must register in the, with the library in advance to use the computer, all after every use, regardless of whether or not the pa, a patron has cleaned them. One thing I have seen in doctors' offices is something where there's a little sign, you know, in a, a plastic sleeve, that on one side it says, uh, this, this, uh, area is clean for use, and then the other side says, um, needs to, uh, has been used and needs to be cleaned, and it's something where people who go in as, as patients actually flip those when they get up. Yeah, and as it is, you said that they will be, uh, cleaned, uh, after every use.
Right.
Ensure employee work zones allow for proper social distancing and prevent employees from congregating or crossing into each other's work zones. You only have three employees in the building, shifts are staggered, and no one works near anyone in the building, each staff member has their own phones and are not sharing them. Uh, and then, yeah.
I'm gonna be a friend of you, we have a serious issue with our phone going on. It doesn't work. So, we have purchased a cell phone for the library, and usually, what we have set up right now is one person answers that cell phone when it rings, and I, or another staff member calls patrons back on their own cell phone. The library, the library's main phone is not functional.
Very good.
Hasn't been functional for a very long time.
All right, and it may be beneficial to post on the library's website that new rules, what the rule, new rules are for are for coming in, as well as the new process for picking up library requests. And you've already done that. It's on, it says it's on www.babcocklibrary.org. For that, is that the town website, or just the library's website?
The library's website, the library's website.
Can we also get it posted? Cheryl, what do you think about it being posted on the town website? If you're there.
Sorry. Yes, we can absolutely do that.
So that it's, you know, depending on where people go, that might be helpful. Is there any place, place else we would put them? Would we put it in the next Ashford citizen, just so that the, whatever one we're in time for? Does it make sense or not?
I think it does.
What do you think, Bill?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, that way, you know, if people are not going to websites, you know, there, some of our elderly do not have those kinds of accesses, so that might be helpful, too. So that's, runs through the list of the questions that the Department of Public Health had. And, so Bill, I just want to ask you, should we be waiting to see what the, let's see, were these sent to the Department of Public Health?
Eastern Highlands.
Eastern Highlands, I'm sorry. Um, I don't know if they were sent there. Bill, are you comfortable with us opening the, the library based upon these responses? And actually, Beth, you're comfortable at this point with everything?
I am. I've been going to other libraries and, in other towns, and I feel very safe in the environment and the way that it's laid out here with the numbers and how it's all set up. I, I feel very comfortable with it.
And Bill, based upon, based upon them, Carol Anne providing the responses to these questions, but it hasn't gone to, um, the Eastern Highlands, or there was responses, are you comfortable at this point with approving the opening of the library?
I'm comfortable with approving it as long as we get, we make sure that those responses were sent to Eastern Highland, and that they're comfortable with the responses.
So, um...
I'll make, I'll make a motion to authorize the board, the library to open contingent on confirmation that Eastern Highlands questions have been responded to, and they have no follow-ups.
I'll second that motion. Carol Anne and Beth, are you comfortable with that as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So if, depending on how quickly Eastern Highlands gets back to us, and they were very quick the last time, um, you may have, you know, if you have to field some calls, if you can't open it on the ninth tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because we don't have those responses back.
Actually, Carolyn, I don't think we were thinking of opening tomorrow. There's something going on, isn't there, I don't know, floors or something going on?
Cleaning floor in, down on the first floor, so we want to make sure that the first floor is cleaned up, so that when they do enter, they're not going through construction.
So what, what she's trying to tell you is that they're still working in the main hall at Norton. The flooring is still being put in, so there are still some items out in the main lobby.
Okay, so that's a safety issue.
Right, right. And plus, we want to open the building up and have it look all sparkly and new versus, you know, just come on in.
Yeah.
Catherine, can I just ask, would someone there forward the list to the, the response to the, um...
Yes.
Chris will do that.
We'll have Chris do that. Yep.
Thank you.
And, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Bill, any more discussion?
No. I'd just like to thank the library director and the board for their efforts on this. I know people are anxious to, to get back as normal as we can, but I think that you put an extra effort in it to answer everybody's questions, and safety, of course, is the most prominent thing that we all have to consider. But thank you very much.
Yes, very, very much appreciated.
And I'll vote in favor of the motion on the floor.
As will I. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for all your work on this, and thank you for being mindful of the, truly mindful of the need that the town has for people to be able to access the library.
Thank you.
Okay, so bear with me. In reading that, I am trying to get back to our...
I think we're to E now. Approval of a resolution allowing Cheryl Baker, Chief Financial Officer, Town of Ashford, to sign Department of Economic Development and Community Development.
Yes.
And I'll make, I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion. And, all in favor?
Cheryl, do you have any, any comments on that or anything?
Uh, no, I'm familiar with the application and, and comfortable signing it.
Okay, what's our timing with that?
The pre-application, we'd like to get it in as soon as we can, just to get on the list that we will be filing an application.
Okay, but there's not a deadline that we're approaching real quick or anything?
The Bond Commission meets on the 25th of this month, and right after the Bond Commission meets and appropriates the funding, they will open up the actual application process.
Okay, I, I don't know how true it was, but I heard rumors today that Bond Commission may be postponed.
No.
But in any case.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, if I recall? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion passes. Cheryl, thank you for, um, helping us get through this, part of this process.
You're welcome. Chris deserves 99% of the credit.
Uh, very good, thank you.
I often say, tell me what you want me to do.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approved submission of Kittle Rock remediation pre-application. Can, um, Chris, can you speak to what's in that application in general? In general?
Just give me one second. Basically, they're asking for applicant project information, what kind of an organization we are, that we're a municipality.
Yeah.
Um, I have to get clarification. One of the things they want to know is, is the applicant partnering with a private entity? We're not, but we are partnering with another municipality?
Yeah.
And that usually scores us points.
Yep.
Um, most of the questions don't really pertain to us. They pertain to a, either municipal partnership. Um, they want information that really has nothing to do with us.
This is really just...
They want a description of why the site would be considered a brownfield. It's already been proven a brownfield with the Phase 1 and Phase 2 reports. And basically, it's just five pages of nothing. It's just to get on the list.
Bill, are you comfortable?
Chris, I, just a couple of quick questions. Chris, we had authorized additional payments to our environmental company that's doing the assessments there. Have they completed that part of the work, or, and is that going to be part of this? Or is that coming to the next stage?
No, the remediation, the preparation of the remediation plan is part of the current grant that we have now.
Yeah.
That's why, um, you know, we did a little wiggling with funding, so that there would be enough money to do the remediation plan, and that we would still have money left over if they'll let us use it for legal fees that will be, that will incur applying for the next grant, for the remediation grant. So we're hoping to be able to spend the whole $200,000 before December 31st.
Okay.
And...
And that remediation plan will be part of the next application?
No. Well, we'll have it in hand. It's going to be extra points for the application, saying, here we are, it's basically shovel-ready, we have the plan, we know what we need to do, we know how much material has to be taken out. Um, and we're looking for money to cover that, so that we can get the property, so that then we can decide what to do with the property.
Okay.
Bill, are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable with moving on that.
Okay, I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for the summary, Chris.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next one is a sad one. Acknowledge Barbara Zulick's resignation from the Babcock Library after 11 years of service. She has been such a valued member of that board, so...
Absolutely. And the only thing I'd like to make a motion is that the Board of Selectmen asked Chris to do a letter to Barbara thanking her for at least her 11 years. I know it might look on the books as 11 years, but certainly a lot more years than that, but...
Right.
Thank her for her service to our community and wish her the best.
Very good. Chris, good with that?
I got it.
Okay. So, uh, and now I forget, did we make a motion on this?
Yeah, Bill moved it.
I second it?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you. Discuss procedure for authorizing Recreation Commission fall sports activities as they relate to the Department of Public Health and Eastern Highlands Health District COVID guidelines. Um, on this item, we received information about what those guidelines are, and I would expect that we would get, for any falls, the activities, that we would get something akin to what we received from the library, from the Rec Department, for them conducting those activities, to make sure that they had, they were going to be covering all safety procedures. Bill, what's your thinking on that?
Oh, I, I agree. I think we ought to have uniformity in what we're doing, and a formal, as the library board did, I think they did a great job on that.
Yeah.
But have something that we can submit to Eastern Highlands to get their feedback before, I know before I'll vote to approve anything, I'd certainly want their sign-off on, on whatever. I know it's not my gardener's particularly part to doing that, and he's let us know that, but I also appreciate his input, just because he's been intimately involved in all of this since March with us, and I'd like to keep him on board, with at least being aware of what we're considering and getting his input.
Okay, so we would expect Sherry to put something together to send to us, and then it will be, we can take a look at it, and then we can do that review, and then it's sent off to Eastern Highlands to do their review? They send it back?
That's the way we handle the library board, and I think, until we come up with any additions, I think we ought to at least stick to that.
I like it, too. So, uh, do we need a motion on this? We're just discussing it.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion. Chris, you can let Sherry know if you can pass it on, if you need clarification.
Yep. Very good, thank you. Author, the next one is authorize ratification of two CDBG resolutions related to the use of program income. Chris, would you summarize that for us?
Yeah.
That particular item and for the public?
Um, the first, the first resolution is going to allow the town to continue to allocate up to $25,000 of program income during a program year, which runs July 1st to June 30th, for the Ashford Food Program. And the town will allocate up to 122,000 of program income during the program year for improvements at the senior housing. That's the first resolution.
Yeah.
Chris, didn't we already vote on those two items at a Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, but we have to do a formal resolution for the Department of Housing.
Okay, I'll make that motion on both parts.
Well, the other, wait a minute, the other one is just saying how we spend the money that we have in use of program income. Um, program income can be used to fund administration and program soft costs, and they give percentages of what you can spend for each item. So it's basically, it's amending the program income plan that was adopted, oh, a while ago.
Do we have written resolutions to these that have been printed out?
Yeah, we have resolutions that they get from the Department of Housing, they're boilerplate resolutions.
Okay. I'll make that motion on both parts, Catherine.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Tax refunds.
I have two. First one is to Justin McCallum for $317.16, and the second one is Wayne Pacarvik for $12.53, both citing 12-129.
I'll approve that. Motion, make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Lighting the statue.
Yes. Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Review and act on town clerk's security camera request. So, Cher, is, Sherry, you're on, and you, if I understand correctly, you are taking 500 and something dollars from your budget, and it is your budget to manage, to put a security camera on the, pointing, hi, Sherry, to the ballot box. So do you want to speak to that?
Okay. Um, it's, it's actually, it's not a big ask for you, I just wanted to make the opportunity available to you, if you wanted to expand the work order that I was putting in. Muley Security is who we use for the cameras that we currently have in the town clerk's office, and because of the big election coming up in November, and everybody's concerns about the security of the election, we're going ahead in our office and installing a camera. It, it's going to be in the corner, so that you can see the ballot, the absentee ballot drop box, and all the way over to the front door, so you can see anybody approaching up the stairs, coming towards the box. You'll be able to see any activity there. And additionally, into the parking lot, you'll be able to see a certain spectrum, sort of in between, there's a couple of big trees on the, on the green, but you'll be able to see some of the parking lot in that. So that, that is what we need, so that meets our needs. But additionally, I had him give us a quote, if you wanted, if, if the selectmen were interested in adding any security at the lower parking lot side door, because that is another entrance to the building. And so he gave me a quote for that, which it actually would require us to upgrade what we currently have considerably, so there's quite a jump there, because it's not just adding a camera, it's adding new software.
And that, those doors are kept locked. Correct. And our employees have keys? Which of our employees have keys to those doors? All of them?
Well, they're supposed to be locked, but sometimes we have some issues where they're found unlocked.
So I would think, I would think that Bill and I would want to know every time there is an issue where it's unlocked, so that we can take action on that. And if it's unlocked, it had to have been unlocked by a town employee, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
So, I think we want to know immediately, because that is, right now, that's a security violation.
Yeah, well, certainly makes the employees feel nervous. We're not happy with it either. But my, my, my suggestion about putting a camera down there was, was, it had absolutely nothing to do with that, it just had to do with the fact that we were broken into, I can't remember how many years ago it was now, but, um, they, they broke into the building, and we had no security cameras. So, um, you know, this way, at least it covers the two main entrances. But regardless of what the Board of Selectmen wants to do, I'm still going to go ahead with my camera, there's no pressure on you. I just, Muley pointed out, Kyle, who does the installations, and Bob, who's the president of the company, they just always want to suggest that if you're going to do something, it's always less expensive to do it at the same they just always want to suggest that if you're going to do something, it's always less expensive to do it at the same time. And then they can make upgrades that are less expensive than brand-new systems.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the cost with this one, for you, the camera you're talking about, for the ballot boxes, what, $512?
Uh, $515. Yeah.
Bill, you were going to say something?
Yeah, Sherry, what is your timeline on getting yours installed?
Well, unfortunately, the purpose for us having it at the absentee ballot drop box, we would like to have that there pretty much immediately because the absentee ballot applications also get dropped off in the box, and we really want people to feel that it's secure. And it's the only thing that I can do that I haven't done. It's bolted down, it's in a visible location. The only thing I can do now that, to make it a step more secure, is to put the camera on it. So I really needed to, and I'm not putting pressure on you, but it's the 30-day lag time from when I tell them we're going to go ahead to the installation. So I need, I need pretty much to know if you want to do it along, tagged on to what I'm doing. I would need a decision tonight. Otherwise, it's going to be too late in the election process. And so I, but you can always do this on your own later. You can do something different. There's, there's no pressure. I just wanted to throw it out there.
The other thing is, we have security cameras, if I understand correctly, in the hallway outside of where the town clerk's office is.
The tax collector, yes. I used one of my cameras to put it on the counter of the, of the tax collector. Two of them in the vault because it takes two to cover that space.
Yeah.
And the reason our camera is to add it to the, the absentee ballot drop boxes, so inexpensive, is because I'm going to pull one off of our counter because that was a way of doing it economically. So, and I'm swapping. That's going to now go outside.
All right. I did reach out to Kerma today to find out if they would do a building security audit. And they're going to get back to us and let us know if they can do that and what it entails.
That was good.
Basically, just for information.
Yeah.
Good.
And it's free.
My thinking at this point in time is to wait for that security audit, to try and see if we can get that as quickly as we can, so that we can take, you know, a good look at it from that perspective and figure out what to do. In the meantime, having you go ahead, as you would have been able to anyway, you get the security camera up on, in that area, and I think you really thought well when you thought about how to position it so you could see who's coming up the steps, et cetera. You can actually see probably right there into that immediate parking lot or whatever. So those who are nefarious can't get up the steps without something being seen and recorded.
Okay.
So, or intent on nefarious acts. So, Bill, are you comfortable with this one, going in that direction?
I'm certainly comfortable with Sherry with what she's doing, and I don't want to hold that up. I had mentioned about the security audit to Chris because I think we should probably do a complete building evaluation somewhat on a regular basis.
Yeah.
But try to take a look at the big picture too. But I wouldn't want anything along those lines to hold up what Sherry's got planned right now, so.
No. So.
For Sherry's plan, and, and I think we ought to make it a priority to try to, if Kerma can't do it, maybe we can look to somebody else to do a, a complete audit.
So how about this? If we have a motion, that is to act on her security camera request. So option one. Option one, yes.
So move.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Sherry, thank you for thinking not only of-
You're welcome.
What's going on there, but for everything.
Okay.
Yes, thanks, Sherry.
Thank you for your help.
Okay, so possible executive session regarding personnel manner. As part of this, Bill, I think we, we need to bring in Chris initially for, if we're going to do our executive session. She has something she wants to cover with us for at least the first five minutes.
I agree. I'll move that we're going to executive session to discuss two personnel matters.
Okay, and that, the time on that is 6:25. I, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion approved. And so thank you for the rest, to the rest of us. We'll be coming back at some point out of this session. But right now, we're going to have our meeting go into what's like a private meeting. And Chris, you're going to join us.
Yep.
Very good. Mike?
Yep, one sec.
Are you there?
I am.
I see him.
All right, so it's going to be me, Bill, and Catherine.
Yep.
For two minutes. Are we ready?
And we're going to join the breakout room.
Chris goes into, there you go.
Cheryl, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay.
So how are you, Paul?
Hanging in there. How about you?
Same thing.
Yeah. Some of that stuff just drives me nuts.
Yep.
I'm sure you guys too, you know?
Yeah. It's, uh, it's, there's a lot to do with all of this.
Yeah. Yeah, and lacking somebody upstairs is not making it easy, any easier for anybody in that building, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, it, it has its challenges, but it also has its good points, so.
Yeah. Depends on who you are, I guess, right?
Yeah, it'll be a challenge no matter who comes into the position to, to bring them up to speed, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a whole new, whole new layer of responsibility for everybody.
Yeah.
So especially Chris.
Yeah. She gets to teach somebody again, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I kind of wish that the state would, instead of doing their daily thing, I wish you would just come out with some kind of, you know, I know we're supposed to go into Phase 3. He hasn't done that. It was almost like we stopped getting any decent guidance, so.
Yeah, I think there are factors that they're trying to weigh in, like after the 4th of July, more outbreaks, and then the college-
Yeah, but that, you know, that, for my health, like, because I'm involved with the EMS side, that they really haven't done really well about any of that. So a lot of it is reaction instead of proaction or proactive, so. And that's going to happen. It's, it's like, it's like if, I mean, when we were kids, it was the chicken pox, you know? That, that was a big thing. It's the same thing. It's not going to-
Being a big deal.
Yeah, it's not going to go away.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. It, it's interesting to read what's going on because I, I'm supposed to travel. I get updates around, from around the world, and every place is different. And my son's in Europe, so I get, get info from over there. And they're kind of, it's kind of like over here. Every state, except it's every country, is doing their own little thing, and it's causing complete chaos.
Yeah.
So, and, and it's true, though, that one size doesn't fit all. Even in Connecticut, what works at Ashford isn't going to work for Danbury or Greenwich because there's a different relationship to New York, or for us, maybe Boston. So, you know, I don't know. We'll see. Day by day.
Yeah, I just hope our numbers stay down.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think overall, I think you're going to have these little peaks every one, every once in a while until it kind of works itself into everything, but I, I don't think we're going to see a giant spike like we had when it initially came out. At least I hope, you know. I know, like I said, right now in Europe, I know Hungary just shut their borders down because they had a big, in their definition, a big spike, but, so. Just depends on whose definition they're using too. So, oh, the boss is back.
He's back.
You're muted, Chris. Muted.
Right, go again.
There you go. Do you need him?
I need his phone number so they can call him and tell him when they're done.
Okay. Number, oh, he's there.
Bye.
I'm listening.
I need your phone number so they can call you and tell you when they're done.
860.
Yep.
543.
Yep.
1711. Have him text me.
Okay.
You want, you're going to go back in?
No, I'm just going to call him.
Okay.
I'm going to text them. All right?
Yep.
All right, bye.
Hey, Sherry, can I ask you a question? You're, you're muted, but my question is this. What are people doing for, and I guess specifically attorneys or, or people who are interested in properties as far as title searches and property boundary searches and such? My neighbor's doing a boundary line survey, so I'm wondering how that's going to get filed, and then how do I get to review it if the town hall is closed?
Review it as his neighbor, or?
No, like, so if my neighbor files, when he, when they do the, the survey, and then they file the survey with the town clerk, it gets put in, right? So I walked it, and it's accurate, but I want to see what they're, when they're done with it, I want to see actually how they, what the map looks like to make sure they didn't cheat.
Actually, Paul, they're taking all of your property?
Yeah.
And just leaving your destitute.
I'm not, I'm not going to respond to that, Chris, because, because you know what the answer is going to be.
Okay, so I, I can, I-
And we're recording, oh, no, yeah, we're re-recording, so see, I'm not going to respond to that, Chris. I'm just curious.
This is not a hypothetical situation, so it's easy. Okay, so when they come in and they file it?
Yeah.
Okay, that day, it goes into our index. And so we have COT Systems. They put our land records online.
Okay.
And that, yeah, in the map, as soon as I scan it in, then it's available on there. The other thing-
Is that available?
What's that?
Is it available through the town website?
Yeah, but you have to use a link. You go to, you go to the town clerk's page, and there's a link that will take you there. But I will say that because you're a local, that if there's something that you specifically want to look at,
Right.
you can ask us. We can scan it, and we can email it to you. So it's all available.
Really, the, the, I would, there was a piece of property for sale off on Graham Road that I was interested in looking at, but then I, I did some research on it and decided not to. So that, the question came up when I was interested in it, and then I got a letter from the engineering company that's doing the land, the boundary survey about three weeks ago, but I had a knee operation, so I couldn't go out into the woods until yesterday. So I finally walked the boundary, and then they did their preliminary thing, and, and I said, okay, that's fine. I just want to follow up when they do file it to make sure that they don't change anything without me knowing about it. I mean, not that they're, I don't, I don't distrust them. I just want to make sure it's what they did, is what they said.
I, I understand. You're, you're wrong, directly impacted by that, so.
Well, I have a large piece of property too, so it's not, you know, it's not easy. I can't see them doing it. I'd have to stand out there for days to see them doing it. I mean, you're talking about probably almost half a mile to three-quarters of a mile of boundary line.
Yeah.
So that's, I was just curious what was happening with that, and I have a friend who actually just sold their house. So I was kind of wondering, like, if they, they're looking for another piece of property in Ashford, if they want to, to, like, normally I do my own research on a piece of property. Before I even make an offer on it, I want to know what I'm getting into, so. And, you know, I've been in there a few times in the past to look at stuffs.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's nothing, we have, are, the land records themselves, if people need to do research, the images are available back to 1707. The index is back, is good right now online to 1953. And then before that, if you, like, a lot of the deeds, they refer to the early, they'll give you the volume paper in the early one. You just keep jumping back in steps.
Like mine.
Yeah, but you know, people, people just, a lot of times, they just call us and they say-
Catherine? You're muted, I think.
Yeah. Can't read that.
I tried to unmute with the thingy. Okay, so we came out of executive session at 6:43?
Yeah, Catherine, I'll, I'll make a motion to extend the ad for our building clerk.
Yes.
Until the 16th of October to close.
I second that motion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And I think, we don't have anything else on that. So now it is remarks for the good of the board, and I see we don't have Chris on here. I very much want to thank the town employees who have been working with both of us during this time. I have a special thank you for Chris, who has really been such a resource to both Bill and I and is helping to facilitate different things for us and keeping us informed. But I definitely want to thank both Cheryl and Sherry for also keeping us informed, for being there to answer questions. We are very thankful that you have been so helpful while we work through this process.
That goes for both of us. Catherine, I will move a German.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Night.